Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting for October twelfth, twenty twenty. My name's Donald Campbell, I'm the Chair of this board and I'm gonna ask everybody to please introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Good evening, everybody, Bruce Lee Clark.
Good evening, I'm Jean Connor.
Hello, Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, this is Jim Carroll.
Good evening, happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, this is Sarah Perrin.
And also with us tonight, we have Nancy Lively, we have Taking Minutes, thank you Nancy, we have uh Town Manager Stuart Hurd, Assistant Town Manager Dan Monks, and we have uh Mike Cutler with CAT TV. Um, so yes, I, couple of, couple of special things, first of all, uh, it is Indigenous Peoples' Day and happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, glad to celebrate that, formerly known as Columbus Day, but now uh we're taking the opportunity to celebrate um Indigenous people and it's probably worth just taking a second to recognize that we're on land that was once uh used and claimed by the Mhekan's and the Avanakis, and we honor them and honor the land that they uh took such good care of. Think also it's worth just mentioning that we all, as we all gain uh self-awareness about this, I happen to have the Bennington Town Plan up and it's interesting that in our history section on Romanum O seven, it starts out, the town was chartered in seventeen forty-nine by Benning Wentworth, and, and that's true, but it's interesting that that's when we start history in our town plan and I think maybe we um, when we do our next town plan, we could stand to revise that and look a little bit further back and look at the people that were on this land before European settlers. Besides being Indigenous Peoples' Day, it also is the day after the hundred and first birthday of Marian Cutler, Mike Cutler's grandmother, and so we're excited to uh wish Marian Cutler happy birth, happy belated birthday, and it is also the birthday of our own Sarah Perrin, who is turning, what, twenty-two today, twenty twenty-five? I guess we're not saying. Just kidding, we're very happy to have you here on your birthday, Sarah, so not only are you here on a, on a uh holiday, public holiday, but you're also here on your birthday, so you get the, the double good support award for tonight. Before we start this meeting, I have to read this uh one piece, which I read every week. That says, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott in pursuant to addendum six, executive order one dash twenty, act ninety-two, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend the meeting, however, the public may view it on CAT TV and call in at one six four six five five eight eight six five six, entering the meeting ID eight six two four eight four seven nine eight three three, and I'll put that up on the screen in just a minute. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call in accordance with law. So let me put up, before we start this meeting, let me put up the call-in information. I'm going to uh read it again a little bit more slowly. Uh if you want to make a comment at an, at an appropriate time, please call in at six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID eight six two four eight four seven nine eight three three. You'll have to press the star, I mean the pound sign twice, and then you'll be entered into the waiting room, where you'll hear uh music or uh hall noises until you are entered into the meeting. We'll enter people into the meeting in the order that they call in. Because of a change in the Zoom privacy settings, uh I can no longer unmute callers, so when it's time for you to speak, you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. And I may, when, once I've entered you into the meeting, I may need to uh remind you, but star six is how you unmute yourself once you're in the meeting. Okay. So the first order of business tonight is the consent agenda, and that is the minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and the warrants, and uh may I have a motion for the purposes of discussion on, on the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
What, second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on the consent agenda, this is the, again, the minutes of September twenty-eighth and the warrants as circulated, if you have not had a chance to talk to Stuart about any questions or concerns you have about them, now is the time. Jim has his hand up? Thank, oh no.
Donald?
Oh, that, that was my cursor, my bad. Uh Jean has her hand up, go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just wanted, for those um out there on in the community that pay close attention to the warrants, I just wanna make sure that you understand that the MSK warrant on page six um is a reimbursable invoice, it's part of the lead line project, and so that's not coming out of um the, the butt, our, our butt, well, it is, but it'll be reimbursed. And then the Tetro concrete um invoice on page seven is being paid out of reserves, that was, um, it was, there was, that was, there was money raised from the community um to pay for that, so none, neither one of those are um expenses that will come out of your tax money.
Good point, Jean, and I like that you uh are keeping track of things and looking at the big numbers, yeah, it's, those are sort of
I try.
Tens of thousands and those are important numbers to understand, so yes, um, all, all settled on those things. Any other comments? If not, I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves, and uh all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, we are, we have passed the consent agenda, thank you very much. We will be moving on to public comment, and public comment is the time of our meeting when we welcome individuals to call in and tell us what's on their mind, as long as it's things that are not on the agenda already for the evening. And uh again, let me put that call-in information up. If you would like to call in, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting code eight six two four eight four seven nine eight three three. Press pound twice, uh it'll tell you what to do, and then you'll be in the waiting room, and you'll be entered in the order that you've called. Don't forget that when you are in the, called into the um, brought into the meeting, you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, so I don't see anybody in the queue for public comment. It's um, public comment runs from six oh five, yeah, so we're well into the time when people would have called in, were there any public comments to come. Oh, here comes one. Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting, uh please give us your name and tell us what's on your mind, you may have to press star six to uh unmute yourself. Caller ending in eight four zero, you're in the Bennington Select Board meeting, and we're glad to have you here. If you can, please press star six to unmute yourself and um tell us your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Uh, good evening, uh can you hear me? I'm Sam Roushino of Bennington.
We can hear you, Sam, good evening, thank you for calling, what's on your mind tonight?
Uh, well, it reverts back to the end of the month when we uh had uh protests, and this one was really intense, and as you know, I had a discussion with Stuart on this issue, and I'm still looking to put this on an agenda item about um some type of a policy, not so much of an ordinance, but a policy on protesting, uh it, it's borderline whether there was a police escort or not, but if they were gonna be parading around Bennington, there should have been a known parade route of what the route they were gonna be taking, just to keep people in the know, and there was some confrontation, and I don't know if select board members care to comment on this, uh on this issue, uh it just got intense because there was one protest of uh one going on at noon and the other one at two o'clock, I forgot which one was, was going first, one was Back the Blue and the other one was um honoring what has happened because of VLM. Um, and it's just uh, you know, somebody's gotta be in charge on a certain protest, in the event that something does happen, they can be held accountability on that issue.
Yes, you're um, yeah, thank you for that comment, Sam, recognizing it was uh short notice and there were, there were some conflicts, but thi- this isn't a
I mean, I mean.
discussion, but I'm, I am going to turn it to our town manager just very briefly. If you have anything you, you wanna pass on about that, Stuart, I, I, I I know that they were in contact with the town about a week before the march, and I know that uh Chief Dusek did everything he could to try to accommodate them with the personality head. Other than that, I, I'm, I'm not sure what to be.
That, that's, that's correct, Donald, um uh and Sam is also correct, there was a confrontation, uh and an individual has been uh cited for uh, I think either disorderly conduct uh or assault, I'm not really sure which, but the police did act on, on the, the complaint they received and uh normally these things are approved and run by the chief of police because they're people who are occupying either the sidewalk or the streets. Uh, this, the parade route was, was somewhat uh overly large, uh they did move throughout the community, uh and I, we, I know that we attempted to have uh an officer escort, um and uh that's really all I know about, about this particular incident, but normally uh these things are, are run through the chief of police, they are approved by the chief, and the chief provides necessary um officers depending on the, on the organization and the situation, so.
Yeah.
I, I, it, it is, it's unfortunate that, that there was a confrontation, uh but uh you know, in these days where peaceful protests are uh thought to be appropriate, I, I think the town is, is also acting appropriately and, and providing sufficient police escort as necessary and following up when confrontations do occur.
Right, like quote unquote, Stu, like you said, you gotta keep the peace, I understand that as we spoke, and I appreciate the phone call, return phone call. Second note, as you know, we had a horrific straight line windstorm that came through uh the town of Bennington and surrounding areas, uh care for a brief summary of what happened, I mean, I don't know how much storm damage we, did we receive, I know a lot of tree damage, and my hats off and uh accolades are to the town, uh highway crews for taking matters and cleaning up and opening up roadways as quickly as possible. Um, nobody was really prepared, prepared for this, National Weather Service did state that uh you know, we could have uh um, we were in a, a wind advisory or uh no, there were thunderstorm warnings predicted, but uh, uh posted, but they were short-termed and with these straight line winds that came through, nobody expected that half of Bennington would be out without power. So um, I'm just looking for a brief summary. Uh, we looked towards you, while we have a Facebook page in Bennington, on, there, there should have been some type of a, a summary that if anybody was in need of uh help, uh tree crews or no power or um whatever the, the, the need rise, um town residents can go to the town page and ask for help.
Well, that is, that is available to people, um this was mostly uh tree damage, as you have said, uh and power outage, and, and the power was out in a very wide swath of Bennington, um and of, of course, north into Shaftesbury and then south into Pommel. Uh, so there were, there was a huge outage, uh but as far as I know, um there were not a lot of uh problems for people. Um, my experience was that people, where the street lights were or the signal lights were out, people were providing uh patience and allowing cars to alternate through intersections. Um, it did come on very fast, it, the storm was traveling at seventy miles an hour. Uh, when it hit Bennington, uh we were caught totally off-guard, uh we hadn't even received a, a National Weather Service warning at that point, um but um that was a fast-moving storm and it uh did a lot of tree damage, I, I don't know that there's a lot of other damage, uh and I haven't heard any follow-up to that either.
Town crew.
No, I didn't either.
Absolutely, there's no question about it, they, they did a great job cleaning things up, um.
Yeah.
People can always still use the telephone, Sam, I, I, a lot of us uh have no use whatsoever for Facebook anymore, so I, I say pick up the phone if you, if you need help and call the town, call the police, call whoever you need help from.
Okay, well, we've, we're, well, be, be, besides New York and, and Massachusetts. I'll let you be, you've got a long agenda, especially on a holiday, and I thank you folks for having this meeting, I'm out, bye-bye.
Thank you, Sam, good night. Okay, I'm gonna close uh citizens' comment at this point, and we are going to um move on to a public hearing for the discontinuance of highway, of Town Highway eighty-five, AKA Dump, uh Town Dump Road. There was a site visit this afternoon at four, a number of us met there to take a look at it. Um, I don't know if Dan is going to uh talk about this, or I'm not sure who's the um, who's the best person to uh to call on for this, but.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in, Donald, um historically, this, this apparently was operated as a, as a dump that was used by people in the community, uh it was never owned or operated by the town as far as we can tell, and, and so uh when, when this was determined to be a site that required EPA and Department of Environmental Conservation response, uh they looked to people who uh were potentially responsible parties, and those are generally people who own land, uh people who uh operated the facility, uh and in our case, uh a municipality that owned a right-of-way that moves through the site. Uh, that was kind of the extension of what is known as Furnace Brook Road off of North Branch Street. So uh the town and B-Trans, State of Vermont, uh were the two potentially responsible parties identified that could act on the site and have the wherewithal to cap it. Uh, we have been working with EPA, because this is an EPA-led site. Uh, B-Trans has taken the lead on developing the plans and the protocols. Uh, we are providing men and equipment, labor and equipment, um and uh we've reached an agreement with B-Trans, and Dan, you can confirm this, I think that agreement has now been formalized, uh where they will pick up the cost of any, uh anything that the town can't do, and uh we're gonna be using some of the spoils of the PFA-related construction project, so there's a lot of material available to us, and we will cap the site, the, the, the major contaminant is lead, um and the goal is to cap the site and keep uh vehicles and personnel off the site uh to the extent that we can. Therefore, we are being asked to discontinue the right-of-way so the public does not have legal access through the site. Um, and this, this road ran from the end of Furnace Brook Road all the way out to Chapel Road at one time, but it, part of it's been filled over, part of it's been decimated. Uh, but there are trails that work off through there and, and we're gonna be working to try to minimize the amount of pedestrian and vehicular traffic that we get into the site.
I think the board was impressed with um with the way town staff has handled this, when, when we went out there to see it, it's certainly something that a small town could never, uh, you know, could never take on quite in the same way that our town has in terms of dealing with the EPA. But this, I don't know if you can see the map I've put up on the screen, can everybody see that? So this is the area we're talking about, this is at the bend in two seventy-nine. So the uh, the middle school is up here, and um this is East Road over here, and this little area right in here, I'll zoom in. This little area right in here is the area where people for many years dumped. And I think the thing I needed to be convinced of was that this was not an important public access. This was not a connection trail, or this was not, we're not giving up something that we were going to someday want uh for part of our recreational infrastructure, and um, you know, it's been quite a lot of effort in building mountain bike trails on the Shields Drive parcel over here, but that's on the other side of the stream. And so I was convinced after going there that there's absolutely no reason why we need to keep this so-called Town Highway eighty-five open. Um, any other board member feel like weighing in on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, when I heard that it was lead, that made me kinda shudder, but um I was assured that lead does not leach into groundwater.
That's correct, Jean, uh lead is, is one of the, the metals that does not move readily
Right.
um through, through transport via water.
It's, it's, it's actually better to leave it alone and cap it than to start disturbing it, moving it.
That's true.
Yeah.
So the area that would be impacted, this area right here, uh where the town used to dump off of this road, would be cleared of trees and then uh clean fill would be brought in and um used to cap it off, and then this so-called Town Highway eighty-five, it's really just a, a rustic trail at this point, would be completely taken out of commission so that um any potential hazard for people in terms of lead contamination or any other contamination would be, would be uh absolutely reduced to just about nil, because there would not be a lot of traffic going through there. Jim, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Might wanna turn your, uh, we're having trouble.
For you, uh because it is, what, can you hear me?
Uh, it's pretty patchy, Jim, if you can get closer to the wifi.
Okay. How's that?
A little better.
Better? Okay, all right, question for you, Stu, with respect to it being a former landfill, is there any sequestration of uh methane?
Uh, it, this, this, it, it, this landfill goes back prior to the nineteen fifties.
Okay.
So I, I don't think, I, I don't think methane is an issue here, uh it's, it's, and it, and in the end, it, it was more of a construction dump site than a
Okay.
solid waste dump site, so I don't, I don't believe that's an issue, EPA has not indicated that's an issue, nor has the State of Vermont.
Good, thank you, and Donald, I'm gonna sign off and uh sign in again to uh try to get a better connection, okay?
Okay, thanks, Jim, Nancy, we've got that. Um, okay, other comments, uh other comments during this uh public hearing? Go ahead, Sarah.
And this is strictly for the discontinuation of the route right now, correct?
Discontinuation of that skinny little town route uh that I, that I just showed on the map, I, I've taken the map down, but it, we, we only have an in, a legal interest in what was a, a town road, and we'd be throwing that up as part of this negotiation to uh.
Ultimately, uh the, the landowner will be required to file uh a notice in the land records that this has been a cap site, um and uh but that is not our responsibility, uh because we, we simply have the right-of-way through there, and by throwing it up, and that's what, that's what the technical term is, I know that's an interesting concept, um, we will have, we will have no ownership responsibility at the end of this project.
So will, will we discussing the costs at a later date, correct?
Well, we, we, yeah, we'll, we'll know the cost before we get going, uh but as I said, our cost is going to be mainly labor and equipment. We don't know what that is at this time, uh we think it's a project that we can handle, uh and we, we said early on in a meeting with EPA, DEC, and the State of Vermont, that we would be willing to try to do that as long as the state took on the costs associated with developing a plan, uh developing the operations plans, and uh picking up the costs of anything that we can't do. And uh so they, I think we've all agreed to that, um and uh we're looking probably to move forward now in the spring.
Well, Stuart, as you've expressed several times at, at, to me, and I, I can't remember if it's in public meetings or not, but this is something the EPA is going to force to be done, this has to be done, Sarah, so we can't get, we can't get out of doing this. It, uh, what we don't wanna do is have them do it at their high rate, you know, charge us the moon for it and then have to uh pay that when, when we can um get it done with our, our hard-working and, and efficient crew.
Sure, yeah, so I just wanted to be sure that we're, the one motion right now is to just continue the route, and then at a different point, we discuss the costs.
This is just a public hearing, technically speaking, so we're, we're in a public hearing about the, the discontinuance of that road. We'll come out of that public hearing and then I'll look for a motion um to throw up the road, yeah.
And what happens when you, when you throw up the road is it, it goes back in equal parts to the adjoining property owners, in this particular case, I think it's the same property owner on either side.
Okay, thanks, just to clarify, costs are not in this motion, this discussion at all, correct?
Right, no.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Anything from Dan or Stu that we missed?
I'll look to Dan.
No, I think that covers everything.
Great, thank you.
All right, I don't see any uh, I don't see any public comment coming in on this, so I would like to close the public hearing for the discontinuance of Highway, uh Town Highway eighty-five at this point, and before we move on to our next item, uh I would look for a motion on the resolution that was circulated. Um, Jeannie, I didn't ask you to be ready to re- read this resolution, but um why don't I just read it? Whereas, following a duly-worn site inspection of Town Highway eighty-five, sometimes known, sometimes known as Town Dump Road, in a hearing on October twelfth, twenty twenty, the Select Board finds that the public good, necessity, and convenience of inhabitants of the town of Bennington require legal discontinuance of the town's interest in the right-of-way known as Town Highway eighty-five in order to satisfy the town's legal obligations under an administrative settlement agreement and an Order on Consent for Removal Actions, AOC, dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Be it resolved pursuant to nineteen BSA seven ten, Bennington Select Board hereby discontinues the so-called Town Highway eighty-five depicted on map subset one B on the July twentieth, twenty twenty, uh Vermont General Highway map, Town of Bennington, Bennington County, Transportation District one, attached here to a Schedule one. So if uh if, if, if anyone uh has um any opinions, that uh draft resolution is on the table. Anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll move, and we adopt.
Thank you, Bruce, anyone second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jean, Jeannie? Um, any further discussion? If not, I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves, and all in favor of the resolution that's read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? No? Okay. Thank you very much, just, I gotta take a minute to thank town staff too, that, this could have really costed us a lot of money, and I know that uh working with the EPA is not easy, and you folks took a lot of hits from uh all sides, but thank you very much for, for persevering and finding us a good way through that, it wasn't the town's fault that that dump's there, but we're nevertheless in the chain of titles, so.
Yeah, and I would like to add my, my thanks to Dan and RJ for uh having the wherewithal to see it through, uh to work with B-Trans, uh and to work with the folks at EPA to, to get this thing uh to a conclusion.
Excellent. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the uh, uh the policy displays, signs, and art on public property. We looked at, again, this is policy, this is not um an ordinance, this is something that we, becomes the Select Board policy, we can change it if, at any time, if it's not suiting our needs, but this is uh so that we are able to articulate to the general public how we view these things and how we make decisions on these things. Um, recognizing maybe this is, this is not perfect, but it's uh, it's based on a lot of good thinking, and we've added a lot of, as you can see, we've added a lot of or Merrill has added a lot of, our, our lawyer, a lot of uh edits and redlines, and um I don't think we need to go through each one of those because it was circulated in the packet, um but I would ask anyone if they have any further additions or second thoughts on additions that we'd like to share at this point.
Yeah, Donald, thi- this, unless it's been changed uh over the weekend, I don't believe this incorporates uh Sarah's suggested change.
Okay, uh I don't, this is the, I'm reading, I'm looking at the. Okay, uh, I don't, this is the, I'm reading, I'm looking at the, and I read the pa- the packet uh red line.
Right.
Uh, and so Sarah's change and I believe, Jeannie, did you have something to? Go ahead, Jeannie.
Yeah, so I I think the last, yeah, I think the last two changes that were suggested didn't make it into this. Um, although I have lang- we have language from Merrill and I did send that out to everyone right before the meeting. Um, it's in section three, it just further clarifies, it's line twelve on um the. The version in our packet, um, uh, let's see, line twelve, it says. Propose a project to the Select Board and then Merrill added. Which proposal may be approved, denied, or approved with conditions in the Select Board's sole discretion? And which shall be, and then it goes back to what we already have, subject to all other provisions of section four through eight below. She didn't feel like it needed to be there, but I think it, I think it reads more clearly.
Not changing anything but clarifying the intention, yeah, okay. Um, so Sarah, before, I see your hand up, Jim, before I go to you, Sarah, would you please um, for the purposes of discussion? Let us know what you your addition was.
Yeah, so my addition was section three, line six and seven concurrently reads red line. The primary contact must seek a select board sponsor who will assist the group and or individual proposing a project with review process. My suggestion was to change that to the primary contact must submit a summary proposal to the Select Board. Who will, to seek a sponsorship, I'm sorry, I'm messing this up because I'm reading it. But um, who will seek sponsorship to assist the group, et cetera.
So, uh, does anybody have, um, I don't have it in front of me, what your, what your full proposal was, Sarah, I don't know.
No, it would just be a section three, line six, um, after must. You would cross out seek a select word sponsorship, sponsor, and then add submit a summary proposal for sponsorship to the Select Board.
Who will assist the group and or individual proposing a project with the review process?
Yeah.
So.
That makes sense.
Can you read it all the way through, Kea? Can you read line six and seven then?
As proposed?
Yes.
Please.
The primary contact must submit a summary proposal for sponsorship to the Select Board, who will assist the group. And or individual proposing a project with review process.
I don't think the intention was that the Select Board would assist the group. And or individual proposing a project for the review process. I think that was um for a sponsor, an individual who is willing to take the time to kind of. Sit with that group and and work through the process. Uh, so what are you, what are you getting at there, Sarah?
This would be for the Select Board to find sponsorship or for the Select Board to sponsor as in as in as a whole.
I may be focusing on too many things here, can somebody else interpret this for me?
Uh, so Donald, this is um Dan, um, I I don't, I understand what Sarah's saying, but it doesn't, it's not the intent of what. The five of you wanted last time, which was that a sponsor, either you get a sponsor or you petition. You don't automatically get a sponsor just because you submit something.
Right, so Sarah, there's there, it's a two-part system, you either talk to somebody and get a sponsorship, you know, which is the easy route. Get somebody to kind of uh sponsor you in this application. If nobody will sponsor you and you feel that you still have a good proposal and you really want the Select Board to consider it, there's a. The next red line down, the five percent uh is something that meant a lot to Bruce and has been inserted as a way for people to get on. Uh, in front of the Select Board with signatures, but I'm not sure that that first line can be altered as you, as you suggest because. The primary contact really is supposed to first try to find the Select Board sponsor who will assist the group.
Be in, if that would take place of that, so that's, the summary proposal would find that sponsorship. Instead of somebody seeking out sponsorship before that the proposal is submitted, summary proposal.
I'm I'm not in favor of that, so my my feeling is that the reason this was set up. This way uh is so that an individual can help the group get through the process. But let's, let let me uh hear other voices here, so I see two hands up, they may be, maybe have been up for a while, but first Jim and then Jean.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Donald, do you have access so that you can put up uh the document? Because I gotta tell you, if I were sitting home and listening to this without being able to look at the language and the the red line. I would be really irritated, and frankly, I am irritated. That we, that we, the general public can't look at the change in the, in the language, in the red lines. They deserve to know and 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 the, and the idea of absolute transparency, put it up, let them look at.
All right, Jim, well, it's gonna take me a little while to do that, uh, but if you, who else has their hand up? I'll see if I can work my way towards that, I don't have the packet downloaded. Uh, let's see, Jean, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to clarify something you just said and I think maybe you just misspoke a little bit, I just wanted to make sure. But you said that if you can't get a sponsor, then you would petition, but I think that's not the case. You can choose to petition. Or that's only kicks in if you can't get a sponsor? I thought it was an either or, not you had to.
It is either or, I was.
There's some confusion there, is Jeannie shaking her head? No. Yeah, it's not an either or, it's that if you do not get a sponsor, then you do have an alternate route to bring it. Before the board, for the board to consider it, and I think both Bruce and I felt really strongly that. If five percent of the population felt something was a good idea, then we should give it a second look. Um, but the uh, yeah, it's it's not an either or, it's a, it's a, if if you cannot find a sponsor. Then there's an alternate route to say, we really do want you to look at this. So it, so that it's not an automatic closed door, it might be.
So then how does the conversation that we had, if someone's uncomfortable. About asking, coming to a a board uh uh and and requesting a sponsorship, then then they could go this other route? I I am so confused with this.
Put the document up.
Jim, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm I'm sorry, it's much more confusing than you would think because of the way, because of the way it works.
And Jim, it isn't, it is uh available to the public.
Yeah.
It's in our package.
I understand that, but you know, i- i- in in this setting, it's not available to the, to the public. And we could show the red line and the changes and we owe it to the public.
Jim, calm down, calm down. All right, so we're uh, let's see, where am I here?
So Jean, I think that the continued um confusion that we're having. Um, and which I think is what Sarah is tr- is 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 trying to bring up, and I think you've tried to bring it up and I've tried to bring it up. Um, is that uh, there should be a single, that it. It might behoove us to have a single way for the public to bring uh an idea. To the Select Board rather than 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 going sort of cherry-picking Select Board members. And that if there was a, if there was a single conduit, so it comes before the board. And it might be one person, it might be seven people, it might be no people. Say, uh, we like this idea and we'd be happy to be a sponsor, you know, and and help this through. And that feels like that's a, that is a concern that's come up several times that we haven't been able to get our arms around. I don't know, Sarah, is that what you were getting at or were you getting at something different?
Yes, no, that's exactly what I was getting at, to streamline the process, so somebody can apply, apply, I guess. Um, you know, so they they should do a summary proposal, streamline it, so it goes. And find two, like you said, seven or none. Then if that doesn't go through, option two, petition, yeah, thank you, right, thank you for that.
Okay. Phew, I didn't hear anything that happened in the last several minutes, cause I was trying to forward this to myself and get it under my local desktop and such. But here is section three, request process, can everybody see it?
Yeah.
I unfortunately, this is a PDF, so I can't edit it, but this is the section that um. That we have been talking about, and so I'll make it a little larger here. So currently, the request process reads, the primary contact must seek a Select Board sponsor who will assist the group. And or individual proposing a project with the review process. If a private group or individual desires to have a project considered, it must be sponsored. Or introduced by one or more members of the Select Board for review and deliberation. Should a project proponent be unable to find a sponsor among the members of the Select Board, then the primary contact may. By a petition describing the project and signed by five percent of the registered voters of the town of Bennington. Propose a project to the Select Board, subject to the provisions of section four eight below. And there's an additional sentence in there, Stuart, have you got it right at your fingertips?
Uh, that's the one we just talked about.
Yeah.
Yes, I do, and I misplaced my glasses, hold on, there we go, um. Propose, which proposal, it says uh that sentence would read in. By petition describing the project and signed by five percent of the registered voters of the town of Bennington, propose a project to the Select Board. Which proposal may be approved, denied, or approved with conditions in the Select Board's sole discretion? And which then shall be subject to other provisions of section four dash eight below. I think it's probably four through eight below. So the new wording is after a Select Board, which proposal may be approved, denied, or approved with conditions in the Select Board's. Sole discretion and which shall be, and then the rest is subject to all other provisions. Is that somewhat clear?
It's clear to me.
Yeah, so that's one, and then the other that Sarah was trying to address. Was whether there was a way for a proposal to come to the full board rather than to individual Select Board. Members um to request sponsorship.
Why would we wanna require that of of the general public? Why, why couldn't a, the general public just ask a Select Board person? Or ask the town manager if there's a Select Board, what, seems like multiple entry points would be better rather than restricting it to one?
Um, if I could just speak to that, I thought, uh, and my thought was that if someone brings forth an idea. To myself, anyone else, I think it's a good idea, I don't think it's a good idea. Either way, if I don't think it's a good idea, I'm not gonna vote for it, but I'm going to bring it forth and then it stops, it's dead. So they automatically would have to go to the five percent, and then, you know, why, why would we put somebody through that process if nobody's gonna vote for it?
I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Well. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Bruce, I'm sorry, I can't see hands raised with this thing on the screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what I was, um, couple, couple of points, um, I, I understand, I think I understand Sarah's. Desires and I ge- and I get that, I think there are several different ways that people could seek a sponsor. That's pretty low contact, one, it could send an email to all of us, and they can do that now. Um, eh, or they could use public comments as we spoke of two weeks ago. So both of those ways, I think, get at what Sarah's, uh, I think, I'm, I'm still not sure. I understand the full importance of Sarah's amendment, but but I think that gets toward what we were thinking of. And it doesn't seem too onerous um to send us all an email, we get them anyway. Um, and you know, if it's an idea I like, I would say I'll sponsor you in that. Um, if it's not an idea I like, then I'll probably not even respond. Um, but that's, you know, it seems to me that there are lots of different ways people can get to us. Um, and get to all of us, for that matter, um, I, so if that's the intent. I'm not sure it's necessary, uh, the, and I don't wanna get it mixed up with the the petition question. The petition question is, is one that people, we, it would be a way for, we ma- my. My view might be changed if somebody can get five percent of the population of Bennington, or the voting population of Bennington. To say, yeah, it ought to be on the agenda, so those are my two thoughts. I'm still not clear about what Sarah's amendment does, I'm very clear about what Jeannie's addition does. And I'm perfectly fine with it, because the ultimate decision is always with the Select Board.
Go ahead, Sarah, I I have figured out how to find hands up now with this up, uh, but go ahead, Sarah, and then we'll go Jim, Jean.
Well, what part could I clarify for anyone that seems not to understand it?
I don't understand why it's necessary, Sarah, it feels to me that uh. It's simply stating that a primary contact is needed and not dictating how you find that primary contact. So I, so I don't feel we should be limiting people to submitting a summary for sponsorship to the entire Select Board. It feels to me that would be one way to find a sponsor, another way might be to talk to one person on the Select Board you feel safe with. Or it, there might be um other ways for uh people to come to a Select Board meeting and uh make the case for it. Uh, it feels to me that we should not be limiting um the way people approach the Select Board with this in mind. To submitting a summary for sponsorship.
Okay, so were, do you have questions about there or just you're not in favor of it?
I, I'm unconvinced why, why it's better to um limit the. The, the way you seek a sponsorship to just one route.
Okay, thanks, cause I'm just hearing that you're not clear, so I just wanted to see if I could clarify or if you're just not in favor.
If I may, Donald and Sarah, I mean, I I found the email. It does appear, Sarah, that the first step you're asking for is that a summary proposal be submitted to the Select Board. As a means to find a sponsor, am I correct?
That is correct, yes.
And and that's, I mean, that, I think Donald is right, that's one way to do it. But you could also approach individuals or any number of board members, um. It it tends to narrow the the, the process, Sarah, if you think about it. You must submit a summary proposal as opposed to you can, you can approach any individual board member. Uh, at any time, so it tends to narrow the focus of your, your request. As a, as a, as an individual seeking a sponsor. I I think I'm reading that right.
What's the benefit, Sarah, I'm truly curious, but what what's, what's the benefit you see? From having people have to submit a summary for sponsorship as opposed to finding sponsorship any way uh that they feel comfortable?
So again, just my feeling to have this in place is that somebody coming to me. As a Select Board member wants me to put this forth as a request, and I, I'm gonna do that. Because it feels threatening to do, I may not vote for it, nobody else on the board may not vote for it either, but then. It's gonna go to the five percent, so it seems like it's a, it's a process that we should go through. So that we don't have somebody go through two processes.
Well, I think the intention is, do I have to, let's see, who's got a hand up? Jean, you've got a hand up.
Uh, yeah, I I'm just, I'm I'm, I could be, I could be an outlier here, but. I feel like these proposals that possibly could come our way are kind of a big deal. And casually sending us an email or asking us in the grocery store. Do we want, eh, do we wanna make it that easy or do we want it to be a more deliberate? Thoughtful process? I mean, to me, if someone's asking for some sort of installation, which is, you know, fairly long-term, it's not gonna be up for a week or a month. Um, it needs to be kind of, the process should reflect that. And uh uh you know, it's really easy to just send an email or run into us in the grocery store and I, I don't, I just, it doesn't feel right to me. But I could be, I could be alone in that.
Well, just suppose, you know, suppose you. Well, just suppose, you know, suppose you are, I mean, we've heard a lot that people aren't comfortable with, you know, all members of the board, or feel unsafe with members of the board, whatever, you know, suppose you're, there's only one person on the board you feel comfortable with.
That's a different issue.
How about just suppose, just suppose that, you know? And, and you feel that it, it feels vulnerable for you to put your proposal out to the entire board all at once without having one person that you can talk to about this and, and talk to about what, what would be needed to kind of make it something that the board would pass, and to make sure that it's something that, that, that this individual on the board feels, can be shepherded through. And I think the point of this is that, uh, contrary to what Sarah said, is that if somebody brings us a bad idea that we feel like is not consistent with, with the boards, uh, with the direction of the town and the direction of the board, that they would speak up at that point. Um, if we're, if truly we're just bringing any proposal that anyone brings to us, then, then this uh primary contact thing doesn't make a lot of sense.
I, I guess I just, I am not personally going to decide in the aisles of Hanaford, or based on an email that I get, that I am going to be willing to sponsor something without, it, 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 with that much information. I would be uncomfortable with just deciding to sponsor something based on a, a conversation or an email. So I, that's, but, but that's my decision to make. If someone came to me and emailed me or asked me in the grocery store, I would have the opportunity to say, I'm not gonna be able to give you a decision right now. You can feel free to send me something more formal and, and more, um, you know, uh, 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 a better description of what you're considering. So I guess that's my own comfort level, and I would have the option to, to choose to not decide right then and there based on the amount of, or lack of information that I may have.
Well, I would be happy to, if, if, you know, add this as a recommendation, if, if we wanted to add another sentence that says, it is recommended that that uh groups wishing to do this submit a summary uh for sponsorship to the select board. I think that's fine to make that recommendation. I do, I do feel like the reason this was set up this way is because not everybody feels comfortable with every select board member.
You don't have to add a sentence for me. I just, I'm not gonna be sponsoring something based on in, in, in inadequate amount of information about a proposal. And that's, that's my prerogative.
Yeah, I would hope, I would hope no, no board member would, yeah.
Right. But, but it, it just seems like the casualness of the process in some instances could make us uncomfortable. It certainly makes me uncomfortable.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna go to um Jim, and then Jeannie, and then Bruce. Uh, so Jim, go ahead, please.
Um, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, the reason, if you recall in our last meeting, the reason that I voted no on the, the provision for the five percent signatures is that I found it redundant. Uh, when in effect, um, were, let's say a petition of five hundred people came before us, the uh select board could still say no. Um, and why make that, it's already gonna be a difficult process, so why make it even more difficult? Um, I just, I don't get that.
Okay, thanks. Um, Jeannie, go ahead.
Hi, so, um, I, I, I like your idea of, of a recommended path. I, I think that would be helpful. Um, I, um, I wanna clarify that the primary contact is not helping the um applicant figure out how to uh craft their proposal for the select board. But in fact, the sponsor is then working with the applicant to go through the process of making sure that they, you know, have good information about how, how big the, the installation would be, you know, and, and why they wanna do it. I mean, it would really be fleshing out the proposal. I do, um, I do worry about um proposals coming in in a more casual way. Uh, I think um Jean's point really hits it for me, uh, that I think it's useful to have a proposal that's coming to us, and whether that comes to us individually or as a full group, I think it should be a, it should be a summary proposal, um, as, as Sarah has outlined. Uh, I do like the idea of the recommendation coming to all of us, rather, rather than, um, uh, coming in through a person who you've, you know, who you may be most comfortable with, because this is not, this is a public installation for the town. So it, it feels to me like you want this to be a more formal process. I mean, I, I can't imagine we're gonna have two thousand installations in town. Um, but I think we do wanna have a formal process for it. So I'm in favor of having a recommendation line in there.
Okay, thanks, Jeannie. Uh, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, let me, let me clarify that I wasn't suggesting that a email to all of us was a informal suggestion. It was a way that a primary contact may seek a spot, a select board sponsor. That's all. So whatever it would take, it would seem to me. Um, I actually, I think Sarah, the only, the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm with you, and that more of a, as a suggestion of a way to do it, up until the point then you start, when we start talking about, well, then the board could, even with a sponsor, the board could reject you. Or if you chose to sponsor, or if I chose to sponsor, the board could then still turn it down, and then you'd be left with the five percent vote. And I'm gonna suggest that that's not what this policy says. This policy says that the five percent uh petition is just to get it on the agenda. It, it doesn't, it doesn't force the board to do anything other than to listen to the proposal, and it can still reject it. So you're, we're not giving people a, a sense of false direction. Um, I'm hoping that these are formal proposals, but someone might enlist my sponsorship by emailing me uh with the details. That's all that that's sugge, that's all I was suggesting, where they may interest me in becoming a sponsor by making a statement at public comments. Uh, but I would, like Jean, want to have a deeper conversation before I choo, choose to be a sponsor, of course. Um, I, I guess I would s- say, if, if your suggestion is um, that the primary contact should be prepared to create a, some kind of full-blown presentation or, you know, description of what they're doing proposal, um, yeah, of course. Uh, but I wouldn't wanna say that that ought to be the, the first thing they do in order to get a sponsor, so if that's what the intent of this is, um, I couldn't vote for it. I could support it as a suggestion. And I don't think the five percent petition process has anything to do with this.
Okay, Jim, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm just sitting here and listening and looking at the, to my fellow board members and uh looking at the language, and, uh, you know, I'm a big proponent of just cutting to the chase. And um, I just wanna throw this out there for argument's sake. Um, why can't we just let people come before the board uh, under the same set of circumstances, um, with respect to whether or not the, the board would accept it or reject it in an open meeting, and cut all this, the, the rest of this out? I'm just throwing that out there. We're, we're making it so complicated and codifying.
It's my opinion, Jim, that this, the way it's drafted right now is the least restrictive. So i- in my opinion, the primary contact must seek a select board sponsor does not dictate how you do that. That, and the, the most expeditious way of doing that would be to waltz into a select board meeting and say, hey, I have this idea, and I'd like you to support it. So m- my, my sense is that that's the way most people would do this. Uh, secondly, they might also just send an email to all of us, or they might send an email to the town manager and say, will you put this in front of the board? So I, I guess, I guess I'm thinking there could be multiple ways, and we should accept, we should accept these, um, um, potential projects in multiple ways, given that there's quite a process.
Okay. Here's, he- here's a point that I wanna make. Um, those are all well and good, but essentially, Donald, when it comes to any one of these proposals, if they were presented in a, in a very simple form uh, before a select board meeting, or in this more complicated, um, uh, stance or process, ultimately, it would come before the board in the same fashion, and we would decide on a yes or no majority, um, agreement, right?
Well, I think, I think it would after due diligence. So this whole, this whole setup is about making sure that proposals don't go too far, go way down the pike and then find out it's an illegal use of a highway, or there's the idea is that, but, but I, what I don't think we're trying to do is to take a straw poll early on um, to, to gauge board support. It, it feels to me like the person who's applying should be given the opportunity to build support for their idea, and should be, uh, given the, the opportunity to kind of, um, bring people along on, on whatever it is that they're thinking, so.
So couldn't Donald, so, so couldn't we do that just as we do now? And, and, you know, eh, apply for a, uh, either in an open meeting, somebody comes forward with an idea, and then we talk about it briefly, and then ask for it to be sent in, eh, uh, uh, as part of an agenda item, rather than just complicating this. That's the, that's my take on it, for what it's worth.
Well, we're trying to, yeah, so I understand what you, you're trying to get this simpler, but I, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to get more, we're trying to set out a logical process that does more due diligence to make sure that the projects that come in front of the board are legitimate projects that could actually happen, and, and would have at least some support on the board before they even get, before they even see the light of day.
Okay, thanks.
Bruce, your hand still up? Are you, with, uh, is that the old hand?
That's the old hand, sorry.
So... Sarah, would you be, would it, would it work for you if we left it the way it is, we put a second sentence in there that says, um, applicants are advised to submit a summary for sponsorship to the select board or approach the select board directly?
Um, it, it wouldn't actually, no, no. I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, other thoughts? So I, um, am not sure where the board feels like we are, but I think we're at a little bit of an impasse on this notion of a, of a, how you gain a sponsor. Would people like more time to think about it? Would people, would somebody like to make a motion? What would, how would people like to proceed?
I, um, I think I'm comfortable with advising people to present a summary proposal. I, eh, rather than advise, may, if, if the word recommended is used, that applicants are recommended to present a summary proposal uh, to the board uh, to gain sponsorship. Which does not preclude someone from doing something else, but it gives, um, it, it clearly states the path of preference. Something like that.
I think it's not gonna work for Sarah, but it, it could say it's recommended that applicants submit a project summary for sponsorship to the select board, or approach the select board directly. Which would.
As, as long as we don't put it in passive voice. You just put it that applicants are advised to, da, 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 da. Okay, rather than it is advised.
App, it's are recommended, yeah, yeah. And, and, and why can't, why, why can't we recommend that they present a summary proposal to the entire board, um, and still leave it open that they could do something else? Um, rather than saying that there, it's recommended to either do a summary proposal to the full board, or to find it, or to give it to one person. Why can't we just do the first half of that?
Exactly. I, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Sarah, would that, so if the recommended path is a summary proposal submitted to the full board, would that make you more comfortable?
If it's, if I, what was the wording, advisable or?
Recommended.
Recommended. Um, and that one I, I have to think on. I think my hesitation is that the review and deliberation of somebody coming in with a sponsor that's not a strong champion is still something I'm thinking about.
Okay, I have uh hands that may be old hands, but I see Jeannie, Jean, and then Jim. Nope, Jean, Jean, go ahead.
Okay, mine's a new hand, and this is just a really small thing, I think. I understand in section two, on page two, it has to, before it comes to the board or a person or a petition, it has to have gone through, you know, all the safety things of if it's in the road and all of that. But I'm worried that people aren't gonna read that. They're gonna jump over that part and go right to the request process. So would it be at all helpful if, right off the bat, it said after the requirements of previous section two, the primary contact must seek select board sponsorship? Because if it doesn't meet the safety standards, then there's no point in it even coming to us yet. Just to make sure people see that, and they realize that that's the first hoot they have to jump through, possibly, depending on where it's installed.
Right.
Cuz you wouldn't want someone to come up with this wonderful proposal, come to a select board meeting, not having completed section two. I'm just trying to put myself in these people's position. This is a lot to digest if you have an idea for a mural. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Jim, I'm jumping over you, so, so cut me off if you should. Um, but I'm thinking, so I'm thinking about the um Sanatina mural in the middle of Four Corners. So if they were going through this process, they in fact did come to a select board meeting and say they had this great idea. And it turned out that their great idea, once they got into it, wasn't possible in its orig- original configuration because it didn't meet DOT or VTRAN's requirements. So they rethought that design. But their first step was to seek support from the select board, and then their next step was to work with Stu and um develop a proposal that met all the requirements. So I, I believe that that is the order that this requires too, is that first, it's, it's an idea that people wanna explore, and then second, um, can it be done the way people are thinking about it? So then should section two and section three be switched, so they're in the right order? That's a Meryl question.
You could ask Meryl about that. I mean, I think another.
It also says prior, on page, on line thirty-four, prior to any review by the town of Bennington Select Board, all projects shall, uh, all projects proposed to be located on the road shall blah, 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 blah. So that's clearly sequential before it ever comes to us. So Jeannie, while that was not what happened with Sanatina, which was what I was thinking, uh, the, this policy, this policy would put them doing the other first, which I actually think is a smart idea.
Bruce, I don't, that's accurate. So this is a Meryl question, I think, because I think what they're saying, before it comes before the full select board for our voting, they have to have gone through all those steps.
And between by review.
But not, but not before sponsorship.
Right.
So it actually should be switched.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe you've got a, I think you're onto a, uh, important point there. The other thing is, Meryl, I think we missed an edit. I believe that we said that there were people, we're not gonna go directly to. I believe that we said that there were people, we're not gonna go directly to the DPW, we're gonna go to the town manager. Uh, wasn't that, didn't we say that Stuart, didn't you agree that that would be a better route rather than having people going directly to DPW?
Yeah, I, I think it was supposed to start in my office.
Yeah, so I think we need to correct that in section two, I like the idea of converting, asking Meryl about converting section three and section two. And we can uh, further, perhaps Sarah, we could have a conversation and I could try to understand more what you're getting at. We could refine a, a sentence that would um. Recommend how people approach the select board, but not limit it to that method, would that be alright?
Uh, sure, yeah, I, I think I explained pretty much what my thought process was, so if you need clarification, feel free to reach out, but I, I. Feel clear that I did, but if you need more clarification, sure.
Okay, well, I'll, uh, we'll take this back to Meryl. Let's see about um, inverting a couple of those things and see if we can come up with uh. A recommended sentence. See how that looks. Okay. So we.
I s- I still have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim, I thought.
It's okay, Stu just answered the quite primary question that I had with uh, the sequential. Part of this is that it would have to be uh, submitted to Stu and as long as it met uh, Vtrans and our, uh, the DPW. Guidelines, that's where it would start. Um, and the, the question that I have now is that. In thi- this argument that we've been having, would this eliminate the five percent uh, requirement?
No, no, this is, this is, this is just simply about how does a person gain a sponsor? And, and a- as, as far as I can see, where we're not quite meeting minds is. Sarah feels like it should come from a proposal to the whole board and. And I'm more of the mind that there should be multiple ways that that could happen.
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd have to agree with uh, Sarah on this, uh, simpler is better. And uh, let's uh, make that so.
I feel like we're spinning our wheels, why don't we uh, table us, uh, come back to it next time, okay? Let's uh, go on to item number six, errors and omissions, um, Stuart, what have you got for us here?
Yes, this is very, very brief, um, and, and I think the lister's uh, note really does explain it. Uh, this is a property on Robinson Avenue that was ultimately uh. Taken by forfeiture by the US Marshal's Office uh, related to uh, some illegal activity. Uh, the ownership was not realized by the lister's office until. Uh, notified by the US Marshal Service, uh, when they got tax bill. And uh, so this is clearly an errors and omissions. Uh, there should not have been a tax bill generated, it is tax exempt because it's owned by the federal government. So it needs a vote at the board and Donald, you would have to sign the, um, as the chair. The, uh.
Yeah. So the, what I'm being asked to sign board is the select board for the town of Bennington hereby grants to the board of listers permission to make the aforementioned changes in the twenty twenty grand list, right?
That's correct.
Any comments from the board? Uh, if not, I would look for a motion to uh, sign the uh, errors and omissions document as presented.
Motion to sign as accepted, as listed.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Any further conversation, any further discussion? If not, I'd ask you all to please unmute yourself and all in favor, please say aye. Alright, any opposed, extensions, okay? Errors and omissions goes through, thank you board of listers, tough job, glad that they do the work they do. Um.
Donald, can we go back to number five?
Oh, Jeannie, I jumped right over it, nice, I'm sorry, I did, I, I, that was. My mistake, uh, item number five, community policing update, Jeannie Jenkins.
Yes, great. So Bruce and Jean and I have three things to bring to tonight, first, I think Jean is gonna talk about, give an update on the community discussion boards. And Bruce is going to uh, talk about the policy uh, meetings and then um. I'll update you on our uh, collective newest thoughts on a timeline through May.
Okay, so the community um, discussion boards that are up around town, once again, there are five of them. Um, GBICS, there's one at Powers Market, the Rec Center, Saint Peters and the Town Office. And um, the question, it was gonna be changed this Thursday and the new question is going to be. What makes you feel safe in your community? And as of today, there, our, our community has come through, once again, there are somewhere between twenty and twenty-five. Different comments, um, a few of those are seeds, I, you know, stuck a sticky note up on there to encourage people to, so I don't really count those. Um, so yeah, they've been really, really interesting, some of them are incredibly thoughtful. So those of you who have participated, I really thank you, we're, I'm keeping track of them, I have a spreadsheet going and at the end of each. Two week cycle, I will be posting the comments, possibly with some edits to, you know, depersonalize them a little bit. Um, on the town website, so you can read what, what people are saying and they'll be um. They'll be designated, I, I would like to say, you know, at the rec center, these were the comments, because it's really interesting of the. I'm checking a few boards, Jeannie's checking a few and we're all sharing that. That responsibility, um, the rec center one is hot, let me tell you, there's a lot of comments going up at the rec center. So it's interesting, um, so anyway, anyone who's participating, I thank you a, a lot, it's um, it's been a really, really nice project. And I'm really glad we decided to do it, so the new one goes up, uh, like I said, this Thursday, the new question and that'll be up for two weeks. And then there'll be one more question, which we haven't even thought about yet, so. Anything else, did I forget anything, guys? Nope, that's everything I wrote down on my notes.
Okay, on last Wednesday afternoon, late afternoon. The uh, second group of uh, citizens plus the three regular folks. Uh, came together to do, uh, to work on the policy of fair and impartial policing. And we were interrupted almost immediately by the storm and loss of power. So we uh, did this old school. Uh, with uh, actual paper or, well, actually some of us had computers working. Um, and uh, we were diligent enough to get it all done, this was the one for impartial poli- and impartial policing. That will go out, uh, back out to the committee members tomorrow. Um, I was away over the weekend, so, um, uh, they'll go out tomorrow to them just for their double check. Uh, the previous three will go to Dan tomorrow as well. And they will be sent out to um, the chief and to the state's attorney and to our town attorney. Uh, those, uh, those three, and then upcoming on the twenty-first. Will be uh, hate speech and uh, policy around uh, policing with hate speech, which is an interesting. Uh, very um, I think appropriate policy for the. For us to be exploring and so we're looking forward to that, but I was impressed with the diligence and the capacity of, again, of our citizens. Who came forward and willingness to stick it out even in a dark third floor. Uh, it wasn't that dark at the beginning, but it was getting darker as we were finishing. So we made it all out safely, I'm hoping the firehouse now has power.
Ready to be relentless, you like it?
It's super amazing, um, so the uh. The plan for the uh, continuation of the policy advisory committees after we've complete. What we thought were gonna be the first six, but are really the first nine, um, right, yeah, uh, in December. Is to uh, in November, December, uh, work with the police department to determine. What the next set of critical policies will be. And then in January, again, take letters of interest uh, from community members who'd like to serve on policy committees. And then February through May, do the next set of priority uh, policies. So uh, that's, that's the schedule for that. Um, discussion boards and Jean just outlined, uh, we will have um. What, a new question this Thursday and then uh, a third question and that will end mid-November. And then um, the police have been involved, are, are always involved in ongoing trainings. Uh, there've been several large ones, they've attended, um, uh. This fall, uh, they are planning to uh, attend one um, eh, at Roger Williams University. Uh, next week and um, as well as a follow-up training with the partnership uh, sometime in November. So uh, we are in, uh, we're looking at dates, they would like to come either late November, early December and. Uh, give the uh, select board and the community an update on, on what they've been doing this fall. Um, then the last uh, area that we have not uh. Gotten to uh, in much detail yet is the community policing and civilian review uh, study groups. Uh, our plan right now is from every, from everything we can learn, it feels like uh, by March. Uh, we will know the direction that the legislature or, or the governor's office is gonna take in terms of oversight review. Um, and that uh, we will be able to move forward with um, enough confidence that we know that. Uh, you know, we're, uh, we're doing work that will get us where we wanna get. Uh, so the current plan, and we're always open for people's thoughts on this. Is uh, to set up three study groups of eight to ten community members and Bruce, Jean and I would facilitate those three groups. And have them uh, have them have a charge of examining the purpose, structure and responsibilities. Of local civilian review or advisory boards and at the end do that, uh, we would solicit. Um, letters of interest in March, uh, we would have facilitated groups meet probably April through June. And then at the end of June, have a report out that uh, looks at the three groups work. And uh, and their um, findings in, in terms of moving forward with the civilian review board. Um, this in addition to everything that we've done. Takes us over a hundred different opportunities for formal engagement in this process, which makes us very happy. We also realize that we are starting to hit that number where um. People that want to engage may want to engage more than once, so um, we, you know, we, we will still encourage. Uh, people who have not engaged before to take part, but we will certainly have room for people to uh, continue. And, you know, and, and work in this process, so that's our best guess right now as to, as to where we're gonna be. Um, the bibliography, bibliographies that the researchers put together in the fall will be very important in this last. Uh, uh, community policing and civilian review study groups, um, because that bibliography. Bibliography will actually form the basis for um, the conversations that we'll be having. Um, Bruce and Jean, do you have any other things that we should add to that? Okay, so that's what we've got for today.
Thank you for that. Um, how many opportunities for public participation, did you say that was a rather?
Yeah, we're, we're up, we'll be up uh, around a hundred, so, yeah, so, we're good.
Nice work with that, alright, so Stuart, we're uh. Apologize for bouncing over that, Jeannie, we're gonna move to item number seven, the manager's report, what have you got for us tonight, Stuart?
Uh, not a lot tonight, Donald, um, in your packet, there was, I, I revised slightly the, the policy that the board used last year. For uh, getting agency applications and information. Uh, regarding those who are placed within the budget and those who are placed on the ballot. Um, it, it codifies more than, than we had in the past. Uh, the statutory obligation, and I did include a copy of the statute which talks about social services. Uh, being funded by municipalities, um, uh, just for your information. And it, it does add just a paragraph on supplying an IRS form, if in fact you use that form. Uh, some of the smaller nonprofits may not in fact use the uh, form, what is it, I nine ninety? Um, IRS nine ninety. But so I, I just wanted you to have that because I need to get that out to the agencies, uh, we're, we're now. Have begun the municipal budget process, uh, staff are working uh, currently on their individual department budgets. And I wanted to give the agencies a head up, heads up as to what we would expect from them this year. Uh, and basically it's if you're not asking for more money than you were last year. You need to submit your application with necessary documentation provided here. Uh, and in both cases, for those who are placed in the budget and those who are placed on the ballot, the information basically is the same. And uh, we understand that uh, those who go on the ballot. If they want to receive more funds from the town, or if they're a new agency that has never been funded by the town, they must petition. And get five percent of the voters on their petition, uh, but otherwise it's, it's the same as we've had in the past. And uh, I just want you folks to know that we, we're gonna be getting that out to people, and that's all I've really got.
Okay, so Jean's got a question and Jeannie also has one, let's start with you, Jean.
Yeah, thanks, Stu, that's really, it's very clear, um, I, I'm wondering, um, should you include the information that. Agencies would need if they, if they decide they wanna petition or have to petition, I should say? Just include it or, or contact you or something like that about petitioning?
Uh, yes, we could, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I, I mean, it would, contact me, the town clerk has the forms uh, in, in her office, so.
Yeah, just, just something to tell them what, what they should do if they have to petition.
Yep.
That's it.
Hi, um, two quick things, one, um, I'm thinking we wanted to add something that's. That clarified that you needed to be a nonprofit in order to.
Uh, yes, you, you and I talked about that, Jean, I didn't get a chance to really uh, get that into this before the packet went out. Um, we in the past have funded only nonprofits. Not for-profits and I think that's what Jean is, is driving at and I think we would have to. If that is our case, because the statute is not clear in that regard. Uh, the statute appears to allow any agency deemed to be a social service agency, whether for-profit or not. Uh, may ask for monies from the town, uh, so it's our policy that we're only gonna consider nonprofits. I think probably we need to say that.
Okay, that, uh, yeah, I would appreciate that, and then I'm just wondering. Under, um, we, we say that agencies are also invited to present at the March annual town meeting. Can we say they're encouraged or expected, I mean, we do want them to come and. And give, you know, a thumbnail sketch of why the voters should support. Should support them each, you know, each year. So I'm just wondering if we could change invited to either encouraged or expected and I, I don't.
I don't have a problem with that.
Just something slightly stronger. Wanna see their shiny faces?
Can do, sounds good.
Okay, thank you Stuart, um. Upcoming agenda, what are we looking at, let's see, we're getting into October now. Sort of pre-budget season a little bit.
Yeah, your next packet will have the budget schedule, I'll get that out to you so you'll understand what, what the timeframe is for. Us to get our budgets off to you in time for your January review process. Us to get our budgets off to you in time for your January review process. And I don't think I have anything. Other than that in the in the in the queue, Donald.
We will uh obviously. Our standing policy of the uh community policing, we will hopefully finish the policies. Uh the policy displays, signs and arts and public property discussion. And we did talk about an update from the rec center, um.
The night, so the rec center and UCS on November ninth.
November ninth.
And then either, and then the police department, either that second meeting in November or the first meeting in December.
And the second meeting in November. We're backing up, bumping up against Thanksgiving during that week. Yeah, that should be alright, we should be able to meet on the twenty-third unless you post, I think that's too close to Thanksgiving.
Hey, we we seem to specialize in holidays.
Yes, we do.
Alright, um. Other items, uh other agenda items that are pressing at this point?
You jumped over the twenty-sixth, is there any or nothing special on the twenty-sixth?
Well, the twenty-sixth, Jeanie, we would have community policing update once again. Policy on displays, we'll be back before you, uh and right now, those are the only two items.
But then we'd have the budget schedule, the 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 beginning of the budget schedule. Jeanie Jenkins, you and I need to do managers for this stuff. Let's get cracking on that, okay. Alright, uh. I think we're going into other business, um. Lot of good things happening in Bennington, but I'm I'm gonna let other people speak first and if you miss any of my favorites, I might I might say something, so uh Bruce, what have you got tonight?
Well, I'll try to keep it to two things, one, uh I've been pleased to take my uh grandson over to Stark Street. Park and playground, uh he's a big fan of the hill. Uh and as am I, uh and I wanna thank the folks who worked hard on that. Uh the DPW folks and and everybody involved, um. It's, it really is a much uh nicer use of that space that the town has had and. I'm I'm thrilled about it, um and uh the second thing uh. Is if you haven't seen um a Bennington PD officer yet in the la- this month. Or their automobiles or vehicles, uh please check them out, um and um. I wish I could remember what the, you can make contributions, they they're decorated for this uh recognition of uh the fight against cancer. Uh and as one who is uh still lives with uh a really minor cancer. Um uh I'm I'm always uh fond of of working on those, so uh there is a way, I think there's a special patch. If you wanna make a contribution, uh and there's also a T-shirt if you wanna make another contribution. I think ten and fifteen dollars, I think are those, um or you can just make a contribution, it'll all go to this cancer center up at. Up at SBMC, so thank you folks for doing that, I appreciate it.
Uh Jean.
Let's see, I have, actually have a question for Dan and it's not like a fluffy question. Um are we, is the select board, school board meeting on for, what is it supposed to be, October twenty-first?
Uh I do intend to to put out uh an agenda for that, I do have to check on availability of the uh principals, but yes.
Great, okay. Okay, thank you, that's all.
I'm just gonna say that Saturday in downtown Bennington was really wonderful, it was really bustling, um. Lots of people, lots of stores had stuff out on the street and lots of people wandering around and um just. A a great time, so thanks to BBC for that.
Great, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um I just wanna give a legislative update, um as most people may know. Uh the governor signed the budget, but there were specific pro- provisions. In it about hazard pay and I just wanted to give a a brief rundown about um the committee work that. Um I did to expand, a- a- as well as the senate did, to expand the hazard pay and I wanna give you a brief rundown. Um the expanded hazard pay grants to additional frontline workers as these covered employers are grocery stores. A pharmacy, a retailer uh identified as an essential. Uh worker provided that during the eligible period, the retail establishment was open to the general public for in-person sales. Wholesale distributors making deliveries to retailers. Uh trash co- trash collection, waste management or septic service. An operator operator of privately owned water pollution abatement and control facility. A childcare facility is defined, um a vocational rehabilitation. Service provider, a funeral establishment or crematorium, uh. Let's see. And the the uh an assisted living uh residence, a nursing home, a residential care home. A therapeutic community residence, a healthcare facility or physician's office, a dentist's office, a homeless shelter. A home health agency and qualified contracted services, a federally uh qualified health center. Rural health clinic or clinic for the uninsured, a program licensed by the Department for Children and Family. Eh eh as a regi- residential treatment program, an ambulance service or first re- responder service, a morgue. A provider of necessary necessities and services to vulnerable or disadvantaged eh populations. Uh covered employers under this, that not include the state, a public subdivision of the state, the United States. An agency uh designated to provide mental health or developmental disability services. Now, the way that people can apply for this and it primarily has to be the employer. Um they have to go to the Agency of uh Human Services and apply for it and the grants range from. Two thousand dollars for an eligible employee who worked at least two hundred and sixteen hours during that period of time. And twelve hundred dollars for an eligible employee who worked at least sixty-eight hours and less than. Two hundred and sixty sixteen hours. Um I'm gonna post more information on my Facebook page, but people, go through your employers. And have them go to the uh Agency of Human Services and apply for that money, it's there and if we don't take advantage of it. The feds are gonna take that money back and frankly, those people who have been frontline workers deserve it, that's it.
Thanks, Jim, um it's great to have a inside track at our meetings here, really appreciate that you're able to do that. Uh Sarah.
I don't really have too much, but um since it's my birthday, I just wanted to. Say I'm lucky enough to have this couple of celebratory things, uh lucky enough to have the chocolate shop help me celebrate. And um yeah, a couple, couple of treats there, also uh our local flor- florist helped me celebrate as well. Couple other local shops in town, so remember to visit local shops downtown.
Alright, uh l- lot of other things going on this weekend, certainly um. Everybody I'm sure is loving watching this splash pad come to life, how can you not go downtown and and get excited about that, I happen to be coming off of the. Uh the new Route Seven, what do we call that, the um the connector? And uh was parked at the crossing of Kosher Drive and watched a couple of people using the new crosswalk there and it was the first time in my. Memory that I, my heart was not in my throat, uh worried about their uh their safety, so really great to have. That kosher drive uh crossing and and path coming in. Um also, Andre Anne Chanel, I don't know if I've got her last name right, but what a rock star. Uh bringing that BMX track back to life from absolute ruins and making such an exciting weekend for so many people in Bennington, I uh. Andre Anne, you're you're really something and you've done a great, great job with that. Um and speaking of great jobs, I don't know if I can name the name of the award, but our birthday. Uh woman, girl, our birthday girl, I guess we can say that affectionately. Won a very prestigious little award from the Vermont Business Leaders, Jeanie, help me out here, the um. What was it, the Vermont Business Leaders Roundtable?
Yeah, it's it's Vermont Business Roundtable, I believe.
And uh as a young and up and coming um businesswoman, so we're happy about that, Sarah, you certainly um. Glad to see you honored and um.
Thank you, it's Vermont uh Business Magazine's Forty Under Forty Rising Star.
Because I'm over forty, I couldn't remember all that, so.
I knew the rising star part, but I couldn't get.
We all knew you were a rising star, we just uh we couldn't remember the title quite, so sort of.
So hopefully I'll keep going up in that flat hill right now.
Good, alright, lots of other good stuff going on, but why don't we call it a wrap for tonight, um and thank you all for hanging hanging with us here tonight. At the Bennington Select Board and we look forward to the next time, but until then, be safe and uh take care.
Motion re-adjourn.
Yes, thank you, Bruce, uh what was re-adjourn, do I have a second, Sarah, all in favor, please say aye. Alright, now we can go, goodnight, Bennington.